Like to call to order the Sparks City Council Meeting of July 11, 2016. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Councilmember Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, if you'd all rise for the invocation, Speaker. We have with us today Rajan Zed is the President of the Universal Society of Hinduism, a worldwide organization. He has been bestowed with wonderful Interfaith Leader Award. In May, he read invocations in Illinois and Cook County and Kane County Board of Commissioners and Rockford City Council. Welcome, Rajan.
Thank you. I shall be reading from ancient Hindu scriptures, some of them as old as 1500 BCE in Sanskrit, and then translate into English. Om Bhur Bhuvahasvahe Tatsavitru Varenyam Margodivasya Dhimahi Diyo Yona Prachodayat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamya Tamsoma Jyotirgamya Mrittyor Mamratham Gamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmada Saktastatham Karma Karma Samachara Asakto Hya Charan Karma Parma Panotti Purusha Karma Nevahi Samsidhi Mastita Jankadeya Lokasangreha Mevapi Sampashankar Tomrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. By devotion to selfless, one attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Vavatu Sahana Vunaktu Sahaviryan Karva Bahai Tijaspinava Dita Mastu Maavidhvisa Bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samneva Akhuti Samna Hirdjaniva Samnamastu Vomano Yethava Soosa Hashti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om Shanti Shanti Shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Thank you.
Thank you, Rajan. If you remain standing, Ms. Bybee, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get on with public comment, I'm sure we've all read about what happened in Dallas a couple of days ago, or whenever it was. Pretty sad, pretty shocking, again and again and again. I just, it's, I'm really getting tired of doing these moments of silence for policemen and citizens and people getting shot unneedlessly. It's just, it's, you know, it's unbelievable. I'm 70 years old. I don't think I've ever, ever seen anything that's this sad. I mean, it's just, just the people that are dying. So, I don't mean to get on a soapbox, but I'm just, I'm really tired of this. I just hope somebody can have the sense to help fix this. You know, I don't know what to do. If anybody out there does, please let me know. I'll be right there to help you. So, if we could have a moment of silence for the people of Dallas, please. Thank you. Thank you. And Charlie, you want to let us know what these ribbons are for?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. I left blue ribbons out in the front that any of you are welcome to take, just to honor the Dallas police force and the officers that were lost in the horrific shooting on Thursday night. I think sometimes it's nice, just as a reminder, and it's just a ribbon, but I think it's our thoughts and our prayers and our honoring, and honoring our local police and local law enforcement across this country. And I think it's a reminder that as a community, I think it's a priority for us, our law enforcement, our support for them, but for the entire country. And this is just to honor, honor the memory and the families and thoughts and prayers for the families, the families of those that were affected, and in hopes that, now, that, I don't know the answer either of how we change this, but this is just a way to honor them. So, please help yourself if you'd like to take a ribbon with you, just a small token, you know, of our caring and compassion for Dallas police. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie, and I appreciate that. Okay, now we have public comment. If you want to speak under public comment, if you please fill out one of these cards, it will get you on the agenda. First, I have Anthony, is it Anthony?
Anonymous.
Oh, anonymous.
[laughing]
Well, you know, I've been fooled many times before, but that was a good one. Okay, anonymous.
And am I supposed to push this?
They did it for you.
Oh, it's already on. Okay. Thank you. I am speaking anonymously because of the retaliation I am receiving from persons in government. And I am a survivor of domestic violence, and my daughter is also a survivor of domestic violence. The Sparks Police Department, as you may know, does not have training in NRS 199. NRS 199 is crimes of public justice, and those are usually referred to in layman terms as white-collar crimes, whether they're elected officials, appointed, hired government persons, or even contractors with the government who are using their position to commit crimes. The reason I'm coming to you under public comment is I had asked to speak with you on the agenda. This should not be a one-way dialogue. It needs to come both ways. Questions need to be asked and answered, but it's a very grave problem. It's a statewide problem, by the way. It's not just the city of Sparks that is not trained in NRS 199. The first lawsuit has been settled in all of these crimes, and it turned out to be that the settlement averaged out to about $3 million per child. So, it's a very expensive issue. That was not settled in the Sparks community. That's another community with the same problem that Sparks has, but we just want to let you know we'd rather have it addressed. We will keep it on public record. If you want to address it with us behind closed doors, we will do that, but it needs to be addressed, and it's going to be very spendy for the Sparks taxpayers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, anonymous. Can you, can we have someone contact you? You want to contact maybe our city manager or somebody to set up a meeting with police or something? What would you like us to do? Obviously, I can't contact you because I don't have the way to do that.
I can contact Mr. Driscoll if he would...
Is that all right, Steve?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, anonymous.
I just wanted to go through.
Frank Istris.
I would like to speak to the council today regarding illegal fireworks in the city during Fourth of July. Now, as a community, we need to put our heads together, see what we can do about this, because what we had over here on Stanford Way in Teal, we're gonna burn the neighborhood up if this continues, and I'm sure you're aware of it.
I didn't see it there, Frank, but I saw it other places. Go ahead.
So, that's what I mainly came here for today, is to bring that to the community's attention. It's a community issue. If you have some ideas, if we can do something to curb this before next Fourth of July. This is the first time in 42 years of living there on Stanford that I've gotten firecracker debris in my yard, but, and that was from little firecrackers. There was stuff going on over there. I thought they had moved the Stars, Bangles, Parks over there on Teal Street.
Okay. I understand. I get it. I think I was driving around and I saw more than I've ever seen of illegal firecrackers off in the distance. Didn't really know where they came from. So, Steve, if you could maybe, I don't know, put something down and maybe we can talk with Frank on the Fire Department or the Police Department or whomever can take this up. I know he's right. There was quite a few this year, more than I've ever, ever seen before. So... Okay. Somebody will contact you, okay, Frank?
All right, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Anyone else under public comment?
Mr. Mayor, could I comment on that one, please?
Go ahead.
That's okay. So, I just wanted to support Frank, and I'm out doing some door knocking and was in about areas this weekend, and I got to tell you, number one comment at the door was illegal fireworks this year. My husband and I experienced the same thing until 1:00 in the morning. Not just the little firecrackers that you get around the neighborhood, but some pretty significant firepower.
That's what I'm talking about, too.
It was impressive. And so, I know, I know Fourth of July is a challenging day for us because we've got all, not only our law enforcement, but law enforcement across the region in Victorian Square working on that. But, the last one I heard was about 1:30 in the morning, so there's definitely, there was an escalation this year in Ward One in the heart of the city that needs, we need to figure out something. It was particularly bad.
And when I saw most of them was when I was driving from the fireworks afterwards, a few before.
It went on for quite some time.
Afterwards, quite a few, yeah.
But there were a number of elderly folks that I talked to this weekend that wanted to come here today but weren't necessarily sure if they could make it, so I didn't want to speak on there. I told them that I would bring forward their complaint as well.
Okay, thanks, Julia. I agree. It's more than I've ever seen, I think. Anyone else under public comment? Okay. Moving right along, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Mr. Schmidt?
Motion approved.
Do a second. Charlie, Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Minutes. Consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular city Sparks, Sparks City Council Meeting of June 27, 2016, and the special Sparks City Council Meeting of June 22, 2016. Any omissions, deletions, corrections? Looking for a motion, Mr. Smith.
Move to approve.
Do a second. Ms. Bybee?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve the council meeting minutes of June 27 and special meeting of June 22. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, announcements, presentations. Presentations, we have 2015 Golden Eagle Regional Park Annual Report. I thought I saw you in the audience. Welcome, sir. Come on down. I thought it was on here.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Tony Pele, Recreation Supervisor. I was asked to just give you a brief overview of my 2015 Golden Eagle Regional Park Annual Report. This opening photo was a photo taken by Tom Smetus. He's a local photographer. He happened to climb up on the mountain, was actually looking for something else, and looked back and went, wow, didn't realize that it was such a beautiful sight. So, that was the reason for that photo. In 2015, we had 50 events throughout the year. We are currently using Golden Eagle every single month except for the month of December. We've got tournaments in January all the way through the end of November, as well as local play for the youth and the adults. This last year, we also had a five hours of nationally televised coverage on CBS Sports Network, and then this year, we've had quite a few live streaming events out there also. So, we're getting national publications, CBS Sports, live stream, YouTube, a lot of YouTube videos and so forth. On the list of amenities, basketball courts, the rims have been put in, so we've converted the volleyball courts into basketball courts, and they should be striped soon, and we're looking forward to the neighborhood kids coming out and using those courts. Next photo is just an overhead, taken from an airplane of the park. It's an incredible park. That's the comments we get from everyone. They've never seen anything like it. They're very impressed with our amenities and what we do with that park, and I think when we built it in 2008, we knew it would be a gem. We knew it would be successful, but I don't think we had any idea it would be as successful as it is. In 2015, we generated an estimated $22.27 million in economic impact, attracted over a million participants, hosted 50 tournaments or rental events. When I say rental events, we've had cross-country meets, lacrosse, we've had three weddings out there, just about everything. We definitely, it's definitely a multi-use complex. We brought in over 1,100 visiting teams to Sparks, which equated to about 45,000 room nights. 11 of the tournaments had at least 50 to 194 teams participating, which was an increase of three of those tournaments. When we added the two additional youth fields, we were able to expand some of the tournament size and also add additional tournaments where we would run a youth tournament on the four small fields, as well as an adult tournament or a baseball tournament on the six adult fields. In addition, we brought in over $150,000 in direct income from the rentals, which was a 25% increase from 2014. The city of Sparks used to be the third-largest per capita softball program in the country. Our numbers have fallen, adult softball numbers across the country have fallen for the last 15 years, but we're still hosting over 500 local teams a season, I mean, a year, as well as kickball teams, and we're playing 11 months of the year. This list is just some of the tournaments. Senior Softball USA was 194 teams. Triple Crown Sports brings two to four tournaments a year. This and that softball, this tournament started 13 years ago with eight teams, and now it's expanded to three weekends because you can't fit it all into one with well over 150 teams. And then Liquid Blue Events, which is the Boneyard Blast, just happened this last weekend, but it's been going on for 11 years now, and this year, they had their largest, which was 150 teams on fields for two days. So, they're going from 8:00 AM till midnight, and it's packed. This is a photo just taken a couple of weeks ago. It was a new event that we brought in, Youth Baseball Nationals. They had 68 teams here locally from June 17 to the 24. According to the RSCVA, it was 5,600 room nights for just that event. We had teams from 11 states, and they estimated $3.6 million from economic impact. The tournament directors and their staff all came from Louisville, Kentucky. They heard about our complex. They have events in Myrtle Beach, South Florida, and Texas, heard about our complex online, and came out and said, where do we sign? We want to be out here. So, we're looking forward to next year. They're looking to try and double in size next year. So, we've been very fortunate. This, you can't read up there, obviously, and I believe it's in your packet, but it just shows all the different teams, how many are local, how many are from out of town, the total number of days they participate, and the numbers are staggering compared to what we used to have. We've always been successful, even when we had Don Mello and Shadow Mountain, but with Golden Eagle, it's just nonstop. The last page is about the methodology of how I got to the numbers. It was a combination of RSCVA, Athletic Business Magazine, and then a lot of the tournament directors and the National Association of Sports Commissioners. The RSCVA wouldn't approve the number because they don't want to give an estimate, but by taking their number and combining it with other organizations, we came up with a total estimate. According to a 2012 report, National Association of Sports Commissioners says visitors spent $7.6 billion on sports travel in 2011. So, it's definitely an industry that's growing. The RSCVA has recognized it. Just six years ago, they didn't even have anyone specializing in sports, and they hired for that position because they realized what an impact it is. So, just glad to continue to do what we do out at Golden Eagle, and the staff is wonderful, and your support has been great, and that's my report.
Tony, thank you very much. That's wonderful out there, but what's, you know, you've done so well and everything. What's wrong with December? Could you pick that up a little bit?
Snow. We do play in the snow. We have, we did have one tournament in 2014 in December, but they said it was just too cold. But, we still play our deep freeze leagues in January and February. In those leagues, we hope for snow. The local soccer teams have been renting in January and February, getting ready for their league play. It's something that we could never offer in the past. City Reno, City of Sparks, and Washington County, we all close our fields during the winter time, but with Golden Eagle, they now have the opportunity to practice, and my phone is ringing off the hook every single day with teams wanting to practice out there, and it's, I mean, my file of applications is, you know, six inches thick with just rental applications, so it's been wonderful for us. And I'll work on December.
I know it would, please, please, boost it up a little bit. You know, I knew it'd be a great place for people to play and recreate, but I never imagined what an economic impact there would be on that, on a softball complex or a recreation complex like that. Unbelievable the people. I get letters from teams that come from New York City to play here, leagues and stuff. So, it's amazing. So, it's really been a great, great thing for the city of Sparks.
Yeah, they're traveling from all over the country.
So, Tracy, we need to build a couple more of these, right?
Then you need to hire two or three of me.
Well, we'll get staff if we build a couple more of these, no doubt about it. Okay, questions or comments? Mr. Smith? You know, Gino's right. When we watched, we went up on the hill and watched Q and D building this, 11 years ago? Was it 11 years?
It was 2008.
Okay, so, and we had no idea how successful this is going to be, what a gem. Even programming it, I don't know how you guys do that, because with all those teams coming and going, playing, you know, sometimes 24 hours a day on some of those tournaments, that's a heck of a challenge, and you guys have risen to it, and I'd love, I'd love to turn Wild Creek into a, into a sports center also, but great, great job.
Be careful, be careful of what you say.
We, we... Say Wild Creek. No, I forgot what I was going to say. That's the only way, just distract me a little bit, and I'm done.
I can hear the trucks warming up and pulling up in the driveway.
That's right. But, good job. I mean, we're so proud of that, that whole complex, not only the council, but everybody that lives in the city can talk with pride about that, and they do a lot. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ron Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything the council said, great job. You know, we, you know, said two weeks ago, talked about, you know, this project and how well it's turned out, and done a great job. And I know we jokingly talk about, you know, what do we do to expand? There is a whole lot of land out there that we own, you know, to be able to expand this park, and there was, you know, if I'm correct, Tracy, there was three phases altogether of the project, or was it just two? When we did the initial planning for everything?
Sure, there's two more sections that could be developed.
And I do think it's time, you know. This, we're causing ourselves to prematurely here be all worn out, you know, and have to replace that, those fields and everything, and it might be worthwhile to start trying to put a plan together of what it's going to be like to put Phase Two and Phase Three in place, and how to fund that, and how to make it happen, just to get the pressure off the rest of the fields, so they don't wear out so quick. So, I know it's joking, and I know, you know, RSCVA is talking about, you know, doing a big project at Wild Creek, and, you know, maybe the market will change that we don't have to have that, you know, field, but I think history tells us in the city of Sparks that we've always had our softball fields, no matter how many we had, filled up.
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, you build it, they will come. We've always have, even with the three that we replaced, you know, with Legends bought out and moved the money on out there. I think maybe it's time to sit down and start taking an active look of what it's going to take to do Phase Two and Phase Three, just to keep the pressure off the facility. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
Tony, great presentation, and the numbers seem to go up every time I, the last time I see them, they go up and up and up, and that's awesome. I'd like to have that presentation so I can give it to the RSCVA board, and I think there's a little bit of an appetite, and we just had a nice retreat with the RSCVA board, and the way they do some things in Las Vegas might be, we might implement here, where they build a facility and then turn it over to the city. So, there's ways that maybe we can work something out to do these additions or even build fields in other areas. But, the presentation is awesome, great success, with great vision for the city, long before I was on the council. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Bybee?
I'd like to echo basically the sentiments, I think, that we all have, how proud we are of the facility, the economic impact that a lot of people in this community don't realize, and I think we're really trying to, and I think we need to do even a bigger job of really marketing the economic impact so that, you know, our business and other leaders in the area realize the economic impact that we're bringing through Golden Eagle. I think that also the national spotlight on Sparks is nothing but positive, so just a really positive thing on the marketing side for our city to show what kind of facility that we have and what kind of community we are. And also, from, you know, experience, my son played a little adult softball out there. My dad plays senior softball. So, been out there to the park, just right up the road from where I live, and phenomenal facility, and I would agree, an expansion, I think, especially with the growth we're going to see as we look at our population increase, that the local groups, as well as people coming in from out of town, I think it is a time to look at, can we do those expansions? Because I think, I think they're needed, and I just wanted to thank you and your staff for a great job on a tight budget and tight staffing. You guys do an amazing job, and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're still operating on the manpower that we had when we had Don Mello.
Wow.
So, it's been tough, but I got to hand it to the staff. They've hung in there with me for years. We have part-time staff that have been there 20-plus years, and I owe a lot of it to them. They do a lot of the grunt work, and it's been successful. But, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tony. Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ron. One last thing. You know, when you go to a restaurant and the food's great, but the service is terrible, they don't come back?
Yes, sir.
So, you guys are doing a good job, because they keep coming back, and more of them keep coming back. So, keep up the good work, and I know it's tough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve consent agenda items 8.1 through 8.7.
Did you forget how to do this?
Yeah, pretty much.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to 9.1, Presentation, Discussion and Possible Approval of Employment Agreement AC 5268 for Chris L. Maples for the Position of Fire Chief effective September 16, 2016. Mindy, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Mindy Falk, Community Resources Manager, for the record. Today, we're setting the contract, employment contract for the new Fire Chief Maples. It is a similar contract to the current Fire Chiefs. It'll be effective 9/16/2016 through December 31, 2017. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mindy? Okay, looking for a motion? Still looking for a motion?
I'm trying to get it.
Mr. Smith?
Okay, I move to approve the employment agreement between the city of Sparks and Chris L. Maples for the Position of Fire Chief effective September 16, 2016.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve the employment agreement for Chris Maples as fire chief. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please Passed unanimously. Thanks, Mindy.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chris. I know he's not here. He's working probably, so. Consideration of possible acceptance of equipment allocated by the District Board of Health to provide personal protective equipment to law enforcement. The value of this equipment is $17,176.84. Chief Allen, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Members of council, this is Brian Allen, your police chief, for the record. This is just a, a grant opportunity, or really a donation opportunity. The Department or District Board of Health reached out to us and requested information regarding how many sworn we had to prepare us for potential outbreaks of, um, highly infectious diseases such as Ebola and all that kind of stuff. We have Tyvek suits, all of those have a shelf life and they were approaching the end of those lives. So we gave them our numbers and through two different grants that the District Board of Health received, they have allocated us approximately $17,000 worth of equipment to prepare our staff in case of an infectious disease outbreak. And we're just here before you to accept that donation. There are no city matches or no cost to the City of Sparks for this opportunity. If you have any other questions, I'll answer them.
Questions for Chief Allen. Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to accept these grants for equipment in the amount of $17,176.84 and thank the, our representative on the Health Department Board for helping to get those grants and thank you for all of our law enforcement personnel and hope they never have to use them.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve 9.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. 9.3, consideration of possible approval to purchase two fire pumpers from Graham Fire Apparatus Rosenbauer in the amount of $1,165,484. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Martini, council. Ron Corman for the record, Public Works Maintenance Manager. Today, I'm here to request on behalf of Equipment Services to spend a considerable amount of money, over a million dollars, $1,165,482, to purchase two fire pumpers as phase two of the 15-year project to replace our fire apparatus fleet. These pumpers will be purchased from, through Rosenbauer, who was the company that we purchased the original trucks from. The intermediate or immediate vendor, Graham Fire, has changed. The gentleman that we originally purchased from last time retired, sold his business and is now Graham Fire. With that, I'd like to thank Jim Reed and Aaron Phillips from the Fire Department, Terry Shackelford and others for all their diligent work to update and the specification on the trucks and, you know, there's some changes with technology and that kind of thing over the couple of years. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question, Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, Ron, um, last year or the year before, we decided not to renew leases on some of these equipment. So are we, we're paying cash for these?
That is correct.
I like that. I like paying cash. So thank you very much. I know that was a lot of hard work to get to this, but it made sense to me to start paying cash for our equipment like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bybee?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ron, I had a, a question on the, we, I, I see that it's over budget of what is currently in the budget for purchasing this equipment, but my understanding from reading the Budget Correction Plan, that if we do approve, if we prepay 90% within the 30 days, then we would fall underneath that budget. Am I correct? Because the amount that you're asking for is 1,000,000.165 and if we do the 90% prepay, it would be 1,151. So we would be, we'd still have money in that account. I mean, am I reading that correctly?
You are reading that correctly, yes.
And then how do we, is that your decision as a department on whether to prepay or is that something we have to authorize?
It's our decision, well, between myself and the finance manager and I checked with Mr. Cronk this morning, we do have the cash available to be able to write them a check at 90%. So we'll do that and I think it is a roughly $14,500 credit for paying the 90% upfront.
Okay, and I, and I would support that. I think that makes a business sense to save $14,000 and then to keep us within the-
Per, per unit.
Per unit, to, to keep us within the budget, or under the budget of what you have available. So I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I hate to disagree with Councilwoman Bybee, but, you know, you're looking at just a little bit more than a 1% discount for paying 90% upfront with a one-year delivery time, right?
Yes.
Mathematically, we can put that money in the bank at, you know, 1% interest, be making more money on the thing and take the $7,000 over budget and pay, and save the rest of the money. And, you know, these things that are one-year lead time, we all know in the real world, they turn into 18 months, sometimes two-year lead time. And I don't know of any business that pays 90% upfront for a product. You know, so I would, I would highly, I know it's not our decision, but I would highly recommend that we don't do that. We do the minimum that we have to pay for it and, you know, get the product delivered on time.
Okay, anyone else looking for a motion, please? Ms. Ratty?
So, question first, if I do this motion and the city manager wants to get together with the finance director and Mr. Corman and just take a look at the process, whether we do the upfront or whether we hold on to the money, is that acceptable in this motion? Because we're really just approving the contract.
Obviously, we have an option to tell.
Okay, great. Well, just because it's in the report, that way I was, just want to make sure of it. So I'll make a, move to approve this purchase of two fire pumpers from Graham Fire Apparatus Rosenbauer in the amount of $1,165,482. And I'll just go ahead and add on to that motion for clarity to give staff the discretion for approving, approving the, or deciding the payment strategy.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Bybee. Any further questions? Mr. Schmidt? No? Okay, seeing no further questions, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.4, consideration and possible award of the 2017 Street Preventative Maintenance Contract AC 5269, bid number 16-17-002, Public Works number WA-2016188, Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $334,007. Mr.?
Erickson. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, John Erickson, City Engineer. The project before you is to award a contract to SNC for our 2017 preventative maintenance contract. The, in your packet you have the location where all the streets are and the engineer's estimate on the project was $356,600. Sierra Nevada submitted a low bid of $334,007. Staff is recommending award of the contract.
Questions for Mr. Erickson? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move to award the 2017 Street Preventable Maintenance Contract to Sierra Nevada Construction.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve agenda item 9.4 to Sierra Nevada Construction for 334007. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, 9.5, consideration and possible approval of $427,700 for contract labor, for contract labor to support park maintenance and street maintenance for fiscal year 2017. Go ahead, Corman.
Council, Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager for the record. So this item is, Public Works Maintenance is requesting authorization to spend $427,700 for contract labor through manpower. This will equal $287,700 for parks maintenance. This will provide for four year-round contract laborers and one year-round part-time data entry clerk. Will provide $120,000 for street maintenance that includes four year-round contract labor positions. And new this year will provide $20,000 for Washington County Sheriff's Office. Will provide the city with a dedicated work crew of six inmates and one crew supervisor, five days a week for six months to perform park cleaning, edging, weeding, that kind of thing. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Corman and Ms. Bybee?
Will this help address the weed issue that I keep bothering you guys about?
Absolutely.
That my constituents are very concerned about. So this will, this will help with, with weed removal because it'll give us more, more manpower and the dedicated crew from the Sheriff's Department, too.
Yes, ma'am. We've spent the spring trying some different products out there to kill the weeds and now we're at a point where we can go and get rid of them. The idea being is that in the past, we've been cutting the weeds out and then they just pop back up again. So we're trying a little different strategy this year to see if we can't kill them first and then get rid of them.
Okay. I, I would be very happy personally because I'm ready to go out on the median, some vista and take them out myself. So really, thank you. I, that's a number one complaint I'm getting. And, and I know we've had a rainy season, I understand, and I understand the roadsides are the last of the priority, but it is a real problem that I'm glad to see we're trying to address and address more quickly. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ratty?
Same thing. If fireworks were the first complaint, then I think that was only timing weeds in the median are by far the thing that I'm hearing about the most. Though I did want to follow up because we've had some questions because there's been so much conversation about this in some of the other jurisdictions about what we are actually spraying with. And so, this balance between using what's considered to be toxic versus pulling them out. So are we swinging back towards using more chemicals?
We are using chemicals, but chemicals that are toxic only to the weeds themselves and, and generally fairly specific to types of weeds that we have. The chemicals that we use are, there is some toxicity to them, but an animal or a human would have to drink very concentrated and a lot of amounts of it to produce any kind of a, you know, real negative effect. It would make you sick, maybe, you know, give you diarrhea, throwing up, that kind of thing. But, you know, they're not very toxic, especially once they're diluted down into the, what we're applying.
I asked the city manager to get me something on that topic because I'm starting to get some questions as well.
I provided with those the other day, so I'm sure that it's making its way toward you.
Making its way there. Great. But yeah, just really wanted to echo the weeds in the medians in particular, keeps coming up.
Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Ron, my question is, is that can we double that money for Washington County Sheriff's and go 12 months a year?
We're trying to. Actually, right now, the holdup is on the Sheriff's Office side. They don't know that they can provide the service 12 months out of the year, but they are trying to. It goes back to some of the issues that we used to have with temporary hires because this supervisor is not a full-time permanent employee for the Washington County Sheriff's Office. And so they run into that thousand hours in a year deal where then they become eligible for benefits and things like that. So they're trying to find another person that they can use for that other six months and as soon as they give us the word, then we are going to try and, and go that.
I know a good deal when I see it.
Absolutely.
And you want to double or, you know, quadruple this thing and put the, put the resources on out there because that just means we can stay ahead of a whole lot of things, you know, snow removal, everything else like that that we have to do. If they're willing to go ahead and do this, you know, at that, at that kind of rate, you know, more power to get it done. That's, that's a good deal.
I, I have kind of already put my left foot forward and said, if you can provide one, we'll take it.
How can we help? Because I, I think our program costs us close to $300,000 a year, doesn't it? Between the-
Well, I, I don't know what the-
Between the, the labor, the trucks and all that kind of stuff, you know, we spend a lot of money on that. So we can get the same thing for $20,000 with five people. That's good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith, Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the use of contract labor in the amount of $427,700 during fiscal year 2017.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bybee? We have a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve agenda item 9.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Ron. 9.6 is a presentation, discussion, and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding, MOU AC 5270, between the City of Sparks and the Operating Engineers Local Union Number Three Supervisors to add the title of Code Enforcement Supervisor. Mindy, go ahead.
Mindy Falk, Community Resources Manager for the record. Today we're adding the title of Code Enforcement Supervisor to the Operating Engineers Supervisory Contract as part of the final step of the budget, budget reclassifications that were approved on May 23rd, 2016. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mindy? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion, please. Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with Operating Engineers Local Number Three Supervisors.
A second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve 9.6 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Hello and back. Everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Passes four to one. Mr. Schmidt is a no. Okay. Moving on, 9.7. Are we still awake back there? 9.7, presentation, discussion, and possible approval of amendment number, memorandum of, no, that's the other one, amendment number two to the Management Professional Resolution R. 3279 to make appropriate title additions and salary range additions, changes to Appendix A. Go ahead, Mindy.
Mindy Falk, Community Resources Manager for the record. This is the final step of the budget reclassification for the Management Professional Technical Resolution. This was also approved in the budget on May 23rd, 2016 and is within the budget. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mindy? Okay, if not, looking for motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve amendment number two to the Management Professional Resolution R. 3279.
No second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 9.7, a Management Professional Resolution R. 3279. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you. Okay, 9.8, adopt the business impact statement for the regional license and permit platform with a finding of the proposed regional technology fee does not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business. Jessica?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Jessica Eastler, Customer Service Manager. Today I'm here to request the adoption of the business impact statement for the regional business license and permit platform and ask, answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Jessica? Tony, go ahead.
I did have a question on the, your recommendation on the, the fee. You have the fee schedule, but is it, my understanding that for right now, we're not going to assess the technology fee because we have it in our budget to cover those costs? But this is for future and if so, how, how, how far out are we looking?
Well, actually, we are proposing a 0% for the permits involved in the platform at the time to establish the fee and to accept the business impact statement. We are proposing a $4 on annual license and a $2 on quarterly license for business license.
For business license and the 0% is on?
Permits.
Permits, okay.
Yes.
Okay, good. I just wanted to get clarified on that and I see the, the, the numbers, which I don't I just wanted to get clarified on that, and I see the numbers, which I don't think are, yeah, I think it's pretty reasonable. It might be cost prohibitive, which I appreciate because I think that's important for businesses to be able to do business and do it affordably in Sparks. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, you know, they say that once a tax is in place, it never goes away, you know, and so, this is something what we've been talking about with the Sella for a long time is how it will save staff's time once it's implemented. Where's the balance of that, of that, once you implement the system, there's X amount of hours or staff time, whatever they've calculated that's going to be saved, and then you got a fee on top of that? How long will this fee be in place that you don't need anymore because you're actually saving staff's time and money in the budget?
So, there's three items that made up the proposal of the regional tech fee. One was to cover the capital outlay. There's also a subscription fee that we'll pay based on the number of users for the platform going forward, as well as future technology needs of the platform. So, this is a, this system can grow to meet the needs that we have in the future. So, there could be considerations in this fee to meet those needs for the technology in the future.
And where do we calculate savings of staff's time?
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. Steve Rusko for the record. One of the things that we don't know with the system that's coming in place is we are clearly at our practical maximum for doing manual work. There are things that are not being done, compliance and other background and other checks on the backside, that once we start to free up time based on people using the online capability, we will then be able to look and see what other duties these people will be doing. We've been minimum staff since the recession, and so, we're not sure where the people's time will be spent and will be rearranged. We'll be monitoring it, and at any point in time in the future that we find that we could downsize staff for their manual processes, we would take a look at that, and if that was to come through, we would look at recalculating the fee if that was directly linked. So, right now, the answer is, we don't know, but we do know there's a lot that we could and should be doing. And right now, what we're just trying to do is cover, really, all this $4 is covering is the licensing cost. It's not paying for any of the people. It's only paying for the Sella license fee for the annual basis for the license. So, we expect that fee to be around for quite a while.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just answer my question, but we're just trying to recover some of the cost with this fee, right?
Yes, yes, we are.
Thank you.
This cost is going to go up every year, looks like everything else. We'd have something built in for maintenance and all that kind of stuff. We've got to have some kind of looking calculator to do something with that. Anyone else? Questions? Okay, looking for motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to adopt the Business Impact Statement for the Regional License and Permit Platform with the finding that the proposed regional technology fee does not have a significant business impact. Public hearing for possible adoption of the proposed regional technology fee should be set for August 8, 2016.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve Agenda item 9.8 for the discussion, which is a Business Impact Statement. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Very good. Okay. Moving on to 9.9, Review and Possible Acceptance of the City Council of Advice and Recommendations from the Sparks Tourism Committee and Revitalization Steering Committee. And after you make the presentation, Armando, I do have a couple of public comments.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of the City Council. Armando Ornelas, Assistant Committee Services Director for Development. The purpose of this agenda item is to bring forward to the City Council the advice and recommendations of the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee regarding the use of proceeds from the 2.5% lodging tax that is earmarked for projects or capital improvements in Victorian Square or that would directly benefit Victorian Square that would promote tourism. The committee is comprised of five members as specified in the legislation. Two of the members are Captain Woman Ratty and Mayor Martini, who act as Chair and Vice-Chair of the committee respectively. What I'm bringing forward from the committee today is specifically two items. One is a revised master plan that was adopted by the committee on June 10th, referred to as the Victorian Square Master Plan. And essentially, the master plan guides the committee's recommendations in terms of the expenditure of the lodging tax proceeds. You might think of the master plan as the universe of possible projects or capital projects that would be eligible for lodging tax expenditures. And then, the second item is a resolution, Resolution Number Two, from the committee. And you can think of the resolution as essentially their specific recommendations regarding the use of lodging tax proceeds. So, in terms of the master plan, and I'll go through this fairly quickly, there's four projects or categories of projects that would be, that are covered by this version of the master plan. The first one is referred to as the Victorian Square Infrastructure Improvement Project. This is a project that intends to revitalize the streetscape along Victorian Avenue and in the Plaza area, basically from Pyramid on the east, which is over here at the far right-hand edge, all the way to 15th Street, along Victorian Avenue, along Avenue of the Oaks, and then in some of the side streets and along the Plaza. As you know, the Victorian Square is used very intensively for events. It's a terrific events venue, but it's been used hard over two-plus decades, and a lot of this infrastructure in terms of pavers, concrete, et cetera, is really showing its age. So, what this project proposes to do is basically, not on a wholesale basis, but on an as-needed basis, and we have done an assessment and have estimates for each of the sections. What it proposes to do is go in and replace concrete services, pavers, curbs, kiosks, street furniture such as benches, planters, ballards, lighting, et cetera, on an as-needed basis. We've divided it up as sections, if you will, and that work's been done by your public work staff. Brian Kason is here, certainly, if you have, I think, specific comments. The first section, the Section One, is, we're proposing to do immediately after the event season this fall. It has an estimated cost of about $400,000. And the phasing or sections are being proposed in part for three reasons. One is, there's some new things we're looking to do in terms of, for example, planters around trees that are going to be prototyped. Secondly, as you know, and it's a good thing, there's a lot of private redevelopment activity going on in and around the square, so it makes sense to time some of these sections that we're doing, you know, following the completion of these various projects and we're not having to tear things up that we've just installed or refurbished. And then, the third reason was, you know, that in terms of other potential projects, maybe there's a timing consideration in terms of the available dollars. So, that's the first project. The second project is proposed expenditures for the acquisition of artworks for a public art program. The selection of artworks as proposed by the committee would be based on the recommendations of the city's Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee. They're proposing in the resolution to seed the program with $150,000. The third project is what's referred to as the Victorian Square Plaza enhancements. As you know, this is a project that's been on the books for some time, and it really involves enhancements to the plaza to enhance its programmability. As you may recall, there is a proposed cover, tensile fabric art cover for a portion of the plaza, a band stage, a temporary or seasonal ice rink, and then sound and lighting improvements that would allow this to be used for small concerts. So, that price tag for that project is approximately $2.5 million. We've identified this and had gone through the process of developing schematic designs. At this time, you know, I think, as we've discussed with you in the past, it probably makes sense to see what is going to happen along, on the parcels, privately owned parcels on either side of the plaza before pulling the trigger on that project. But it is included as a possible project for use of these funds in this version of the master plan. And then, the fourth project or category of projects is investment or incentives for private Victorian Square retail and entertainment facilities. This essentially would be investments that would leverage private investment in entertainment and retail facilities. As you may recall, the earlier version of the master plan really emphasized being able to attract or incentivize retail development. That continues on in this version of the plan. There are no specific projects at this juncture, but it is covered in the master plan in the event that proposals come forward that the committee and the council could consider. So, that is essentially what is covered by this proposed 2016 Victorian Square Master Plan for the use of these room tax proceeds. In terms of the second requirement of the plan, that it identify how projects would be financed, the thought is that we would do projects on a pay-as-you-go cash basis. There is approximately, well, I would say, including the proceeds from this last month, probably about $3.5 million in the fund right now. The funding accrues at the rate of about $700,000 a year. If we take what's in the bank now and look at the next three fiscal years, I think we're talking about $5.6 million roughly that's available for the project. So, that covers the master plan. The second item that this agenda item brings forward is the actual resolution. And again, in terms of the resolution, you can think of this as the specific recommendations from the committee in terms of expenditures, and so, these are expenditures that, if accepted by the City Council, the city could go forward and make, subject to whatever additional approvals are required. So, for example, in terms of the Phase One or the Section One infrastructure improvements, the city staff would go forward and bid the project, and then, any award of a contract would have to come forward and receive City Council approval. So, the resolution covers the Phase One improvements and then the seeding of the public art fund to the $250,000. Again, that would require, you know, subsequent council action. In terms of, for example, the remaining sections of the infrastructure project, what we're anticipating is, as we move forward, that, you know, the committee will forward you additional resolutions with recommendations to move forward with more of these phases. So, it may very well be the case that even before we complete Section One, that we're looking to do a second section and get that out on the street. So, that concludes my presentation, and I will address any questions that you may have.
Questions? Mr. Schmidt, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Armando? You know, and I understand why you want to break it down into sections, and I'm leaning to the Section One, okay, because you're doing it by itself because you're doing a prototype. But what's our holding, what's our, you know, staff's time, you know, repetitive cost of going out to bid six different times? I can understand some of those things being like Section Six staying away from, but Section Four is pretty much nothing else is going to be done with that. That's pretty well all complete around. Now, there's a cost of having to bid this thing seven different times. You know, in Phase Two of this, couldn't you do all of Victorian Square and have very little that would get changed when development came on in? I can understand Section Six waiting until we have some ideas. Section Five is going to be finished here pretty darn quick, within the next year or so. That's all going to be done. There's going to be no other changes in that. So, I understand, and I'll agree with going to Section One if you're doing a prototype. You don't know what you want yet, you're trying to figure that one out, but breaking that whole thing up into seven different sections, I think, is a waste of staff times. It's repetitive work. You know, you're going to get a bigger bang in the buck, you'll probably save a lot more money by going one shot than it's going to cost you to do it. So, that's my only comment on it, is break it up into so many pieces.
If I may, ma'am. I think, you know, certainly, we can look at that, Councilman Schmidt. It may be that, you know, almost all the rest of it could go in a subsequent phase. We could take that recommendation from the council back to the committee. Section Five, Section Six, I think you appropriately noted is certainly worth waiting on. On Section Five, it may be a couple of years before the bridge is completed, so this area along Avenue of the Oaks will be directly affected, but it may be that we can knock off a big chunk of this in a second.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm sitting here thinking a lot like Ron is that at least we should maybe put out for bid one, two, and three, and then you can adjust a bit later. I mean, I guess you'd give the bid on what your prototype would be, and then if it doesn't work out, we can make those changes, but that way, you can move right into the bid instead of having to take the time. Just a suggestion, because this needs to be done. Victorian takes a beating with everything we do down there. It's a good beating, but it's still a beating that we have to maintain it. And of course, you know, I've always been in favor of Section Seven, getting that done, but I understand waiting on that also. So, just food for thought, Armando.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I guess in looking at the Sections Two, my understanding was that we didn't necessarily have to go in order. When we talked about this before, we had them broken into sections, but we knew we wanted to start at Section One, the beginning of Victorian Square in front of the museum, kind of a key spot. And I do agree with doing, finding out your prototypes, finding out if that's really what we want to do. But really, my understanding was that the other sections could come in any order. They didn't have to be sequential, that we could decide again what else is happening. You know, Fountain House is done in Section Four or Three. I mean, it would be up to determination of, you know, your department and, you know, the committee to kind of look at. But I do like the idea of looking at bidding more to get a better price, to get more work done, a better bang for our buck in doing that. And if that is Section One, and then wherever, you know, the flexibility, am I right that we're not doing sequential?
That's correct, Councilwoman Bybee. I was remiss in pointing out that the numbering was not intended to signify the order.
Okay. So, yeah, I would support that. I'm also excited about the art portion of it, that it's not a lot of money to start with, but it's something, and that with our Arts Council coming on board, I think working together as this work is all being done is the perfect time for art to come along and for, you know, the infrastructure to really create the downtown, you know, really a vibrant downtown that I'm excited about, people living and working and playing in our downtown, and the difference of what our Victorian Square will look is going to be pretty exciting for the future. Thank you for your work.
Anyone else? Questions? Okay, I have a comment from, first of all, Kim Szysinski. Come on, Kim, down. You have three minutes, Ms. Szysinski, and then from Carlos Martinez, who also has two minutes. Go ahead, Kim.
Good afternoon. Thank you. The master plan is an important step forward in being a more dynamic city, and as a representative of 39 North Downtown, I'm hoping that you will support this plan. There are certain indicators that make a great city, and one of those indicators is art and culture, and it brings a connectedness to our community that I think we are lacking and that we need in Downtown. Our city will gain through art displays, social, cultural, and economic value. We are in direct competition to many cities in the city right next to us, and I want Sparks to be a place where people come to live and where they spend their money, and I think art is an important part of that. Art adds meaning to cities and creates a uniqueness to communities and neighborhoods, and it needs to reflect who we are at the City of Sparks. The City Council made an important step forward recently by creating an Arts and Public Art and Culture Committee, which I'm so pleased that you did that. And I think going forward with this creates some funding that is necessary. We cannot have a committee formed without having some kind of funding source, and I'm excited to hear some of the questions going forward. One of the things I would like to mention in talking about the phasing is I think art is an important part of all the phases, because even in the first phase, if we can create some pads that temporary art pieces can be put on, and, you know, it's just concrete that you can walk over, that's an important step forward, that we can do something in the future if we have more funding. So, I think that should be in Phase One, not just Phase Two and going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kim. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Appreciate the support also. Carlos Martinez?
My name is Carlos Martinez. I'm a local Sparks resident and artist as well. I'm here to speak on the behalf of the Public Arts. I've been involved with 39 North and bringing some of the public art to the downtown area there in Victorian Square. I also want to let you know how I've been received by the community with open arms about the art and the stuff that I've been involved with. I've also taken it upon myself to canvas the area between 12th and Pyramid, the residence behind the Victorian Square, and I kind of targeted the residents that had mostly the graffiti, and you can see where the buff marks were over and stuff. So, I approached them and just kind of mentioned how I was working hand-in-hand with 39 North, trying to bring art to the community, and what we could do to ratify the local, whether it's gang, graffiti, or whatever, get some... it's gang graffiti or whatever, get spray painted on those alleys back there by putting a beautiful piece of art that people can appreciate. Two out of the three houses gave me permission to paint back there pending, you know, it's okay with the city and stuff. But they were really excited to hear that I was working with 39 North and the City of Sparks. So, I know that if we had a full backing and support from the City of Sparks, that the community would definitely welcome us with open arms. So, as it is right now, I painted a mural behind the Victorian saloon, and they plan on doing pavers and outdoor seating out there. And that's just kind of like a changing of the seasons from winter to summer, from the Pyramid Lake, the Cherokee River, on down to the Tahoe, Lake Tahoe. So, just kind of stuff. I plan on hoping to paint stuff that revolves around our community, trains, you know, obviously stuff that was founded, that Sparks was founded on. The Blue Bird is one that I intend to paint here pretty soon on one of these structures. But definitely to give our own little city its own identity. You know, I painted in Reno in Midtown, and they've got their thing going. You know, we need to have our own identity and have some of that culture brought here. And as it is with any other big city, I mean, if you just take notice, it's really happening, that public art, big murals, large-scale work, that's actual art that people can appreciate when they drive by it, you know, and see it every day. And obviously, image of stuff that, like I said, revolve around our community and what we're based around here in Sparks, Nevada. I'm just excited to be on the ground level with it and hope that we can take it to the next level.
Thanks, Carlos. Are you working with anybody from the city at all?
Yeah, all of you guys.
Steve, is this something that maybe the cultural new committee we're having can work with? Carlos or Carlos can contact you, and you can put him in contact with somebody in the city to help him through the problems that we might have. Go ahead, Steve.
So, once the committee is up and running, one of the things that'll be there is there will be lots of resources that will be reaching out. And so, part of the committee's function will be to decide kind of what's needed where, and then how they would go about the process of acquiring. And so, acquiring is going to be everything from commissioning to donations. And so, we don't know what that's going to look like yet. We are not trying to put any kind of box around it. We're going to let the committee get together once the council has decided the membership, and then just let them look around and see kind of what's there. We have quite a bit that's already in place. Quite a bit of it is already, at least for us, it's larger numbers downtown. And so, it'll be a matter of enhancing what's there. And I think Ms. Szysinski's point, and she and I have chatted about this quite a bit, one of the things that'll be very important as we do the square specifically, because it's kind of our living room, is having space that we can have things on short-term basis, loans or rotating basis. So, I think that's going to be important, the same as we're talking about doing murals and things like that, that you, just so much opportunity there. So many other cities are doing that in their areas. Phoenix is well-known in their older section, to where all of their alleyways are similar to ours, that the fences are owned by the private citizens, but the access is controlled by the city. And there are a lot of folks in the Coronado District that are hiring folks to do this very thing. So, it's just changing the whole outlook. So, there's lots of opportunity, lots of versions of whatever done. We'll plagiarize where necessary, and we'll generate new ideas where maybe things aren't there. But really, until it's in place, we're not going to constrain the folks on the committee to work with the council on this.
So, Carlos, I think you can take that, as we'll be in contact, okay? So, keep a good thought. You know, I like some of the stuff that we've done downtown and some of the stuff you've done. I think it's really, really nice, and it adds to the city on blank walls that are targets for graffiti artists and stuff. But I've thoroughly enjoyed some of those. So, don't get discouraged. We'll be here, okay?
All right. And then, I also have plans, I'm joining the committee.
Send me your contact information so I have access to it. So, just email it to me.
Thanks, Carlos. Anything else for Armando? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Lost my head.
That's okay. So, as the chair of the committee, just a couple of things that I'd like to point out and some pledges that I'll make to you. So, obviously, it was critical that we got the master plan done. It's been the master plan that's holding us up on moving forward on some of the really basic stuff, like just getting the infrastructure maintained. I want to thank Ron Smith for his work prior to transition, because we had started that, we got it underway. Then, honestly, what happened is the Nugget ownership changed hands, and we needed to take a bit of a pause. And then, I want to thank, you know, the mayor for stepping in and being on the committee as well. We got a great group. The new ownership of the Nugget joined the committee last, at the last meeting. Fantastic collaborative approach, you know, just super willing to listen and jump right in and be a part of solutions. So, very excited about that. We've got a good representative from Harris and then a representative from the RSCVA. And so, again, I've been really impressed with the group. You may be surprised to know that the public art was actually not my idea. It was, came from the committee. And then, there was unanimous support from the committee, so that was exciting as well.
You can take credit for it.
I will. I mean, in all my campaign literature, no, just kidding. So, I'm just really encouraged, because frankly, you know, Ron and I started on this a while ago, and, you know, just one thing after another, it just, the timing wasn't right. But the timing is right now. We've got the right people in place. I think we've got a good plan. Master plan itself is general enough that you'll be able to have some influence moving forward. So, things like phasing or, you know, I'm not sure that that public art number is the right amount. I'm not sure if it's enough moving forward, so.
It's a good start.
But it's a good start. So, just knowing that, you know, how we're doing this, of course, is we had to get the master plan in place so we could move forward. We're bringing you two resolutions, because we want to get started right away, the pilot of the infrastructure and the public art. But I would anticipate in the next phase that, you know, there's lots of different things that can be done. We'll have a few more answers. But I will take back to the committee that you'd like to see some acceleration on the phasing of the infrastructure, and that would be a separate resolution to bring that forward. So, there's still opportunity for you to have another shot at that, just so you know how we're thinking about it. But we'll definitely take that back to the committee. So, with that, I am super excited to finally make a motion on this one to move to accept the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee's adopted Victorian Square master plan and resolution number two, with, again, thanks to staff for all their hard work on it as well.
Mr. Smith?
You know, I'm going to second the motion, but also with a comment that this is a long time coming, and we've done it right. We haven't borrowed money to do this work. We've saved our money so we can do it and have it paid for when we're done, and Sparks is famous for doing that. So, I will second that motion.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any further comments? Con, invite me? Okay, signal comments, please vote. Passes unanimously. Good, it's been, you're right, Ron, a long, long, long time in coming. Obviously, you can take a look at me. I'm not a big arts guy, but I think this is great stuff. It really is. It's something we've needed for a long, long time. And thanks, Julia, for hammering on us, and, you know, we finally paid attention, right? So, it's good. It happened for a good reason, and it's really timed, so. All right, let's move on to public hearings. 10.1, public hearing, consideration approval of resolution number 3298, a resolution authorizing the Financial Services Department to establish an inter-fund loan to the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Fund and/or the Community Development Block Grant Fund and/or the Sparks Grants and Donations Funds, fund from the General Fund as needed. Phew, man, this is going to cost us a lot of money. Go ahead, Jeff.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of the council. 10.1 and 10.2 are similar in nature, so I bring two different items to you. We do this, have done this for the last couple of years. They're really administrative in nature, but we need to do this each year at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, here we are. Happy new fiscal year, right? This is, these are both related to the need for cash flow, just to manage our cash flow and stay in compliance with Nevada law. So, what is common, and so, we'll specifically talk now to item, agenda item 10.1, what is very common with grants in particular are that they are on a reimbursement basis. And often, what is, what happens when we manage a separate fund, which we do here at the city for that, those funds could get into a negative cash situation while we're waiting for the reimbursement from the grant to happen. In order to make that whole, to make that fund whole, we often utilize cash that's withheld in the General Fund to keep the other fund from being negative. If that ever gets into a negative fund situation, that is technically an inter-fund loan, and state law requires us to hold a public hearing anytime and establish a resolution anytime an inter-fund loan is necessary. So, you can imagine the timing of that is really not a practical thing to do. You know, we can't, we can't, the timing of getting things in front of you for agenda purposes, it's just not practical to timely do that. So, what we do is hold a public hearing at the beginning of the year, and essentially, what we're asking right now is for an inter-fund loan as needed, if necessary, in the amount not to exceed $300,000 from the General Fund to these other, we have three different grant funds, to any of them or either of them or all of them as needed. It doesn't happen a lot, but should the need arise, this is what this resolution is seeking approval for.
Jeff, one clarification. One clarification, you're saying beginning of the year, meaning fiscal year?
Fiscal year.
Because it's July, okay.
Correct.
Questions? This is for, now, is, are you going to make a presentation on 10.2 also? Or are you going to wait?
Yeah, and we need to have two separate resolutions, because they're two different funds. So, we have to have two different public hearings.
Yep, okay. Questions on 10.1? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Jeff, so we're doing a $300,000 max for 30 days at a time.
Correct.
But we can renew that 30 days every month if we.
If we need to.
I understand NRS violation when we do a negative balance, which we do 80% of the time in these funds. What is NRS statute, something reminds me of Las Vegas and the sewer fund and a whole bunch of legislative action in regards to transfers of money, loans and stuff. We're not getting in the hot water in this side of things, because we could, because this could potentially be a $300,000 loan for 80% of the year.
Correct. And we're not getting into anywhere near what North Las Vegas is.
I understand.
What this is really doing is a very commonplace activity that cities and municipalities and counties, you know, local governments have been doing for years. It's just, has been reinterpreted more recently. What is common is that, and we practice this, where we pool our funds, all the cash for investment purposes. And so, it's a common practice. However, the taxation kind of came down and said, well, technically, if you float money from one fund to another fund, that's an inter-fund loan. So, what we're trying to establish is to just be above board on, you know, at all appearances, all costs, you know, whatever, however you might want to phrase that. So, it's nothing like what you might be talking about or have read about, what North Las Vegas is doing. This is simple cash flow management, if that helps.
Would we be better off of looking in the next fiscal year or so, looking at these and actually adopting a policy of putting money in those accounts to be earmarked just for that and not transfer loans back and forth?
We thought about that, but this accomplishes it much more efficiently for us. And we wouldn't have to park money where it's not needed for any given point in time, because really, these don't happen very often. They're very seldom, well, more often for grant funds, but not so much for the other ones. But it's not necessary to put seed money in there, because we don't want it to just sit there for the purpose of potentially being reimbursed at some point. With this resolution in place, we can act on a daily basis and move as necessary.
Because I see we're going to be 80% of the time. According to this, 79% of the time, we're in the negative balance.
For the one fund, that's correct.
For the one fund. So, we're always going to be borrowing, paying it back in 30 days and borrowing it two hours later.
Right. Yeah, the problem, the logistics come into play, whereas it could literally be a dollar, and we would be, you know, out of compliance with state law. Without this resolution. And honestly, in most of the cases, it is very small dollars that we're talking about. The only reason we're asking for $300,000 is because, like, you know, one grant in the course of the last five years. So, we're just giving ourselves some major cushion, you know, to not have to come back to you again.
Just don't want to be headlines in the next legislative session.
We try to avoid it.
Thank you.
This is called CYA.
Just trying to follow the law.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I think that the violation that Councilman Schmidt is talking about, this is more of a technical violation as compared to taking money from a sewer fund, essentially an enterprise account that was set up for the creation, maintenance of the sewer lines and getting money built up in that, and then trying to take money out of that and use it for unauthorized purposes. Now, several years ago, the city tried that several different times, and I think we were very successful in halting the practice under different personnel. So, I don't have a problem with any of this, certainly not at the same magnitude of a violation.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing. Open the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action or questions? Any questions? Any further questions? Okay, go ahead, Charlene, for question, and then Ms. Ratty for motion, maybe? Okay.
I just have one quick question. So, on the grant, these grant funds are coming through. We had an instance where it didn't, and we had to borrow the money, and then the grant funds we were expecting did not come through, or were lower than normal, or were pretty guaranteed this is money we know that's coming. It's just a matter of timing.
Not since I've been here.
Okay.
Not that I can follow the policy, because it's pretty straightforward. You know, we expend the money, we then submit the report to the granting agency. It's approved, but that process just takes a little time. So, then the reimbursement process.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve resolution 3298 to authorize an inter-fund loan to the grant funds of the City of Sparks.
Have a second? Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve agenda item 10.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 10.2, Jeff, go ahead.
Again, same thing in nature. This is specific to the General Fund. This, again, doesn't happen very often at all, but there are really two times during the year where, I've shared with you before in budget workshops, that our cash gets low in the General Fund. And in the past, there has been times where it's dipped into a negative cash situation. And again, I want to, I guess, reiterate it and make that clear. This isn't a budget issue. This doesn't affect the revenues or the expenditures, but it is a cash flow issue. So, same kind of a thing. Again, we're trying to protect the General Fund from entering into a situation where it's an invalid inter-fund loan. So, we're asking for the same kind of procedure, but this would, the terms would be up to $1 million from the Motor Vehicle Fund to the General Fund. And these are the same terms that we've done the last few years. So, again, just to kind of cover us when we might ever get into a negative situation, cash situation.
I apologize, I didn't read the caption here. 10.2 is a public hearing, consideration approval of resolution number 3299, a resolution authorizing the Financial Services Department to establish inter-fund loan to the General Fund from Motor Vehicle Maintenance Fund of the City of Sparks as necessary for general fund cash flow purposes. Okay. Questions for Jeff? Any questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no problem with this, because we've been doing it for the last several years. But my preference is that we would adopt a standard in the city council that we would do the 25% ending of our balance, excuse me, then we would have to worry about it.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Jeff. Very nice. Okay, let's go on to plub, yikes, planning, for my people that speak English. Planning and zoning, public hearing on action items number 11.1. Public hearing, consideration of and possible action on a request for approval of an amendment to the tentative development handbook for Kylie Ranch North. A planned development to add a new area, 38 acres. Revised the development map and other matters related thereto on a site approximately 75 acres in size in the NUD New Urban District, zoning district generally located north of the southern division of Kylie Ranch, east of Pioneer Meadows. Planned development south of Lazy Five. A planned development to add a new area, 38 acres, revise the development map and other matters related thereto on a site approximately 75 acres in size in the NUD New Urban District, zoning district generally located north of the southern division of Kylie Ranch, east of Pioneer Meadows, planned development south of Lazy Five Regional Park and along Pyramid Highway's Parks Beta. PCN 14038. Ms. Melby, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I may at this time, I will be abstaining from voting on this item.
Okay. Any particular reason? Do we need a reason?
Yes, I don't mind giving a reason for that. I was involved for a long period of time with staff, a lot of meetings and stuff, and trying to reach a resolution because things became very bitter in the last couple of months on this item, felt that it's best for the rest of the council who hasn't heard all the background stuff to hear it and make the decision.
Okay. I am correct that we do have a reason now for abstaining, is that not correct?
Typically, yeah, Nevada law requires-
Okay.
Ethics law, if you give a reason.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, so we'll go ahead, Ms. Melby.
Good afternoon, Karen Melby, Development Service Managers. Before you today is a request to amend the tentative handbook for the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. As you can see, this is the master plan. The property is approximately 875 acres. This plan, tentatively approved handbook was approved by the city council on October 18th, 2004. In July of 2004, development agreement between the City of Sparks and the master developer, KFM, was approved. When the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development was sold, a new development agreement was signed and recorded in April of 2013. This development agreement is between the City of Sparks and the master developer, which is KM2 Development Eak, and the property owner, Rising Tides LLC. The development agreement allows the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development to be reviewed and approved in phases. I wanted to show you, this project has been approved, this tentative handbook has been reviewed and approved in six phases. This map illustrates the phases. The different colors represents the six phases, the white areas are the remaining areas of the Kylie Ranch Plan Development that have not had phases. The six phases are then recorded as a final document for it. As the six phases have been reviewed and adopted, the standards and the land uses have changed over time. With all the changes reflected within the six final handbook, staff required that the tentative handbook be amended to reflect the current approved final Plan Development handbooks. No development can occur within the Kylie Ranch until a recorded handbook for that portion has been approved by city council. This review today is for the tentative handbook, not any of the finals, which does not address any development, only all the development standards and infrastructure will be addressed when you review a final handbook. As a summary of the amendments that are proposed in the draft copy that is before you today, they are adding 38 acres in the southeast portion of the Plan Development. Let me, I'd be better to look at this one. They're adding 38 acres in this area to the Plan Development. They are amending the street network that matches what's being constructed out there and what is reflected in the six phases that have been recorded. They reflect the updated land uses as approved in the final handbooks. They are eliminating the neighborhood commercial land use. They are combining the two neighborhood parks into one community park, which is this part area right down here. They're adding acreage to the low-density, medium, low-medium residential, which is this area right in here, they're adding some land to Village 37. They have identified villages 17 and 18, which is represented by the crosshatch here, I'm sorry, doesn't project too well, but these two villages are being designated as potential school sites for the future. They are incorporating the new development standards that have been recorded in the six phases, the removal of the public institutional land use, which was amended when we reviewed one of the phases, and they're removing the infrastructure phasing. Within your staff report, I had a table showing a comparison of the acreages by land use designation and what's in the approved tentative handbook and what's in the proposed. The main, the bottom line is that you're, we're going from 838.7 acres to 874.21 acres. This area, the 38 acres that's being added is approximately 18 acres of LMR, 9.42 acres of the park, and 10 acres of open space, which would be some of this area here. At the request by the city, the master development for North, Kylie North, has combined the two larger neighborhood parks into one larger park, and that's at the request of the city. When we did our master plan, we adopted in November for Parks and Recs in 2013, we established a policy that we weren't going to be doing neighborhood parks and we rather have community parks, so they're accommodating the staff's request. With the addition of the 38 acres, the potential for the number of units increases to 4,860 compared to what was approved in the tentative handbook at 4,463. However, in meetings with the applicant, they have agreed that they will not increase the maximum number of units and maintain the total number, maximum number of units for this handbook at 4,463. Also, at the request of the staff, the infrastructure phasing was removed from the handbook because the majority of the infrastructure has actually been constructed or will be completed in conjunction as we review the final handbooks. The proposed tentative handbook provides the current construction, constructed infrastructure, and also what's remaining to be built. The timing will be subject to market conditions. As the future phases are constructed, the infrastructure will be constructed with each phase. Washoe County School District is asking for 38 acres, which would be a combined elementary and middle school site. As I noted before, it's these two villages that has been crosshatched as a potential for these school sites. The school district must comply with the formal purchase process as described in NRS 278.346 before any school site is finally determined. This process has not been started. In review of the Plan Development findings, Plan Development A, in what respect the plan is or is not consistent with the statements of the objectives of the Plan Development Unit, the response to this is that the goal of the Kylie Ranch Plan Development Handbook is to provide for orderly and quality development. The guiding principles are efficient land use patterns, economic sustainability, and a distinct sense of place with people, gathering places, and neighborhood diversity. The plan is consistent with these goals in that it provides open space, a variety in housing types, enhances the job housing balance for the Spanish Springs area. This request is to amend the tentative handbook, as the Plan Development is built out, there will be new phases and the development plans will be reviewed at that time. PD finding B, the extent to what the plan departs from the zoning and subdivision regulations, otherwise applicable to the property, included but not limited to density, bulk, and use. The reason why these departures are or are not deemed to be in the public entrance. The response is, the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development housing density provide for a larger range of zoning code, it's a large, I'm sorry, a larger range of housing densities than allowed in the zoning code. It goes from .4, I mean, four dwelling units to 23.9 dwelling units per acre. Based on the housing to job ratio, it's proposed that this project will generate 1.8 jobs to one housing unit in the analysis, as stated in the analysis section of the staff report. Is anticipated that the Kylie Ranch North will be an emerging regional commercial and employment center. This may reduce the regional traffic by providing jobs in the Spanish Springs Valley. PD finding C states, the ratio of residential to non-residential use in the Plan Development. In support of this finding, the approved tentative handbook had 44.37% residential and 55.63% non-residential. The proposed handbook has residential areas totaling 500, I mean, 354.53 acres, which is 40.55% of 874 acres. The non-residential land totals 519.68 acres or 59.45%. This amendment does not substantially change the ratio between residential and non-residential, between the approved tentative handbook and this proposed handbook. With the approval of the amendment, the maximum number of residential units remains at the 4,463 as approved within the 2004 tentative handbook. PD finding D states, the purpose, location, and the amount of the common open space in the Plan Development, the reliability of the proposals for maintenance and conservation of the common open space, and the adequacy of the amount and purpose of the common open space as related to the proposed density and type of residential development. The findings in support of this, I mean, the answer in support of this is the proposed amendment does not change the combined amount of park and open space acreage provided by the Plan Development at approximately 16%. This number does not include the open space provided in the streetscape, the trail network, and the project landscaping. It is estimated that these areas will add a minimum of 6%, which then exceeds the 20% required dedicated open space for the Plan Development. PD finding E states, the physical design of the plan and the manner in which the design does or does not make adequate provisions for public services and utilities, provide for adequate control over vehicular traffic and further amenities of light, air, recreation, and visual enjoyment. The support of this finding is, the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development provides a detailed design standards ensuring the furtherance of access to light, air, recreation, and visual enjoyment. The plan includes a community park and a network of regional trails for recreational enjoyment of the residents. Chapter four of the tentative handbook addresses the infrastructure, examples, open space, trails, sanitary sewer, potable water, stormwater, management, and roadways. This chapter shows the infrastructure constructed to date and to be completed as the Plan Development builds out. PD finding F states, the relationship beneficial or adversal, adverse of the proposed Plan Development to the neighborhood in which is being proposed to be established. In support, the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development has been approved, Plan Development since 2004. The Kylie Ranch North is one of the largest Plan Developments within the City of Sparks, and its build-out is important to the future of the city. This Plan Development is designed to provide a variety of housing and jobs, with particular emphasis on generating a high ratio of jobs to housing. The city is aware of an ongoing dispute between the master developer of Kylie Ranch North and the master developer of Sonoma Highlands regarding an access easement necessary to complete the plan extension of Lazy Five Parkway on the west side of the Pyramid Highway. At this time, the city staff believes that this matter is best resolved between the private parties and without the city's intervention. The last finding, PDG, states, in the case of a plan that proposes development over a period of years, the sufficiency of the terms of conditions intended to protect the investments of the public, residents, and owners of the Plan Development, development in the integrity of the plan. In response, the proposed amendment maintains the integrity of the plan by retaining land uses that were originally approved in the handbook for Kylie North Plan Development, while addressing the changes that have occurred as the Plan Development has been building out, including additions of a medical campus, arterial commercial, allowing mixed residential uses, including assisted living. The Kylie Ranch tentative handbook guides the development by providing standards, regulating the character and quality of the development while providing for the provisions of community facilities, utilities, and other infrastructure. There is an ongoing dispute between the master developer of Kylie Ranch North and Sonoma Highlands regarding access easements necessary to complete the planned extension of Lazy Five Parkway on the west side of Pyramid Highway. City staff believes this matter is between the private parties and without city's intervention. Included in the packet with your staff report today were the written comments that were received in advance of the Planning Commission. Also is the report of action from the Planning Commission hearing. I have also received 10 anonymous phone calls stating that it was their opinion that the city needs to require roadway improvements of Lazy Five. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of this tentative handbook. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby, Charlene, Bybee, go ahead.
Karen, I had a couple of questions on the changes, you have the two charts that show what was originally proposed and then what was in the tentative handbook for today, and I had a couple of questions on the school site, looks like it was moved, but the original approved tentative handbook originally was 20 acres, and now the proposed tentative handbook today that you're bringing before, so let me make sure I'm reading the charts right, that is showing 10.11 acres.
Yes, the reason is, this parcel here was originally a school site, which has been removed with, when we did review on Phase Six, because the school district didn't want the site. This parcel here is the 10.1 acres school site, which the city does not want the school to be located on our arterial of Los Altos, but this is in the, in order for them to remove this right now, they'd have to do a master plan amendment, so we left this 10 acres, but it will not be developed as a park. Because these parcels are crosshatched as a proposed school site, we did not include that in the acreage for the school. This table would be amended if these sites, if the school district does want to take these parcels down, then that table would be amended to include that 38 acres.
Okay, what is, so what is the size of that parcel, because you said Washoe County School District is requiring 38 acres?
Yes, they need, because they want to make it a joint for elementary and middle school, and that's what they need. When they do a joint, then they, they can reduce it by two acres.
Okay, so what is the size of those two parcels? Should that become-
It's approximately 38 acres.
It is the size that they need for the school district?
Yes.
Okay, I also had another question on the parks. I understand why we're not doing the neighborhood park and that we're moving away from that. We talked about that on Parks and Rec Commission that I sit on quite a bit. So on here, the neighborhood park has been removed, this is 13.6 acres, and then the park that is on the tentative handbook is only 9.42, so we're looking at a one park, but it's smaller in size.
It's slightly smaller, but the staff felt that that was in, same, within the same keeping of what size park that we would want to have.
Because the neighborhood park were two separate locations, two separate parks, and then condensing it to one park, 9.42.
Yeah, we had it, right here was approximately, was a five acre park, and then we had a five acre park here. So we had, this was amended when we revised the handbook for Phase Two. We actually did a master plan amendment, I think it was last year or the year before, I'm sorry, I don't remember the year, but we did a master plan amendment reviewing, removing the park and adding this area a year or so ago.
Okay, so it would have, so it would have a smaller park, the one park that would be there-
Slightly smaller, yeah.
Would be about four acres less.
Point six acres approximately, yeah.
Four acres less than the, than they originally planned.
Well, yeah.
That's what it says, yeah.
Yeah, because 13.6 was the two neighborhood parks, down to 9.42, so about four acres smaller for park.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, this is a public, what's that? This is a public hearing, I'll open up to the public. I do have one card, Mark Gunderson? Come on down.
Yeah, you did want to speak.
Oh, did you want to speak first? I'm sorry. Okay, we'll hold a public comment for one second, Mark.
Hi, Derek Wilson, Rubicon Design Group, on behalf of the property owner, and John Frankovich is here as well. Karen's done a good job, so I'll try to be very brief. First of all, thank you to staff on all their hard work and guidance and their oversight. I think what you're seeing represents their latest thinking, their most complete vision for the area, and I think it's fairly complete. We're asking for an amendment that makes a few changes. As Karen mentioned, it adds 38 acres to the project boundary. It's important to understand that that isn't an intensification of the area, our unit count remains the same, and in fact, that new area is being transferred to this project from a, from a previous PUD, so it's not an overall intensification, it's a redrawing of some boundaries. This handbook doesn't grant any specific development rights, those come back before you with the final handbooks, so you'll have another shot at reviewing this. As she mentioned, we're consolidating some of the park and school layouts, I think that's helpful, you know, that's based on input that we got. You know, it's based on input that we got from those agencies. I'd say the overall point is that we're doing essentially a cleanup. A lot of these are sort of housekeeping items. I think it's sort of a mid-course review of a document that's a dozen years old, so I think this is a chance to, like I said, incorporate staff's latest thinking and make sure that the project is realizing the vision that was laid out a dozen years ago. So in that regard, I think it's a good opportunity, and I think it makes sense to do this. If there are specific questions, I could answer them, or I hand off to Mr. Frankovich. Thanks.
Any questions? Mr. Frankovich.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, members of the council. My name is John Frankovich, I represent KM2 Development and Rising Tide, who are the owners and developers of the Kylie Ranch. As indicated by staff, and I agree that the presentation was thorough, we don't need to go over it, the matter before you is very limited, doesn't allow any development, doesn't permit any construction, is an amendment to a tentative development agreement, which is a little bit of an unusual animal in the planning process, because it doesn't really grant the right to do anything. We have to come in with a final development plan that will be reviewed and approved and recorded at that time when we're ready to proceed. And in that plan, it will identify those areas that are going to be developed, what's going to be developed in it, and what the infrastructure, what the streets are at that time, and that will identify when and where the development will occur. In addition to that, Kylie Ranch, as indicated by Karen, in 2013 entered into a development agreement with the city, which is consistent with the handbook. It says at that time you want to develop it, you're going to record, again, a final handbook for each phase, it allowed the project to be developed in phases. And that new development proposal will identify the areas, the streets, again, utilities that are going to be constructed at that time for that particular phase of the project. As indicated by staff at the planning commission, there was some opposition to the application from the Sonoma Highlands project, which is located, oh, you took down my map there. Hold on, you put that? Yes. This is the 38 acres, which is being annexed to the property here. Sonoma Highlands is located generally in this area right up here. So it's about as far away from the particular new development or new land it's going to be in as is possible. Sierra Highlands is located on the west side of Pyramid. There is no amendments to any of the improvements or plans on the west side of Pyramid Highway. As indicated, about 30 miles, and the proposed amendments simply have no impact on the Sonoma Highlands project. So Sonoma is asking the city to require Kylie Ranch in connection with this amendment to the tentative map, dedicate an easement to them to allow access to their property through here. We don't believe it's appropriate to do that in this proceeding at this time. Staff agrees that it's not appropriate, the planning commission agreed that it wasn't appropriate, and your city attorney agreed that it's not appropriate. I would hope that the council would follow that particular advice. The handbook requires, the Sonoma Highlands handbook specifically requires, that the project developer of Sonoma secure an easement to develop their property. It is not the city's responsibility to do that, and certainly is not Kylie Ranch's responsibility to do that. There was some other opposition at the planning commission, which appeared to be orchestrated by the Sonoma Highlands. Most of the comments were from people that do not live in the area. Most did not understand that the application would not allow any construction at this time, there was a belief that this is going to cause immediate construction. Most of the comments indicated that they believed that there was a concern about the increase in density. As has been explained, even with the annexation of the 38 acres, there'll be no increase of density within the Kylie Ranch. So to require Kylie Ranch to dedicate an easement, I don't believe it's appropriate at any time, and do not, we don't even know at this point in time what the streets in this area or what the development's going to look like, so we're speculating on where an easement would even go at this time, we just don't think it's appropriate. As indicated by staff, this is a dispute, and hopefully it can be resolved, but between private parties, adjacent landowners, and it should be resolved between the private parties. Request that the city not get involved in this and follow the planning commission and the staff's recommendation. Be glad to respond to any questions you may have, and would like an opportunity to respond in case there's something that we need to respond to in any other comments.
Questions for Mr. Frankovich? Okay, thank you, John. Oh, I'm sorry.
Wrong button.
All right.
Sorry.
Ms. Rad, go ahead.
I'm just curious, timing, when are you thinking you'll move to final map?
On which portion? I mean, that's the problem, there's all kinds of.
What's the next step? What are your next steps?
I'll pass those questions to the property developer.
So, John, you'll be available for questions if there are any, or whatever.
Anytime you want.
You may be having some rebuttal later. Okay.
For the record, Scott Christie with KM2 Development. To answer your question, we are planning on submitting our first tentative map this month, July 20th.
Okay. Right, thanks.
Any other questions?
To follow up on that, then, do you, how do you foresee, or do you yet, it's by phases, you're coming to us with each phase of your plan for approval individually, the handbook, a handbook for each phase, do you know where in your development you're projecting you'll be starting, which phase you think would be first?
Okay, the phase that we will continue development with will be Phase Six, which encompasses this area, the 38 acres that we're bringing into the handbook. As you're aware, Phase One has developed. Our next phase on the residential side will be Phase Six, this portion right here. The Phase Six final handbook went before planning commission last week with unanimous approval, and it'll be going before this board, I believe, August 8th.
And those are single-family, a mixture of multifamily, single-family in those phases? I'm kind of looking, what is your, like, your housing numbers from those phases that you're beginning with?
On the tentative map that you will see will be the first phase of our Phase Six. The entirety of Phase Six is going to have, in the neighborhood of 700 single-family detached residential units, and in the neighborhood of 200 multifamily units.
Is that it, Karen?
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you.
So during your comments, you pointed out that the changes that you're asking to be made today are about as far away from that project of the area in question for the easement as could possibly be. So do you have an approximate timeline of when you'll start looking at developing and doing some of the detailed planning that would lay out the roadway in that area?
I don't have a timeline for you. We are currently working on a land plan up there, and we have met with the Sonoma Highlands group on several occasions, so we're working through that. As far as having a final handbook on that phase, which would be this phase right here, I don't have a timeframe for you on that.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of as the market permits, or what you will be doing, because how the market may fluctuate and go back and forth, something up there may not be good now, but in three years may be very good.
Exactly. We've had, we've had some interest here on the hard corner at Lazy Five, we've looked at some different residential uses up on the north end, you know, hit it on the head, market-driven. We'd love to have this final handbook before you guys next month if we could.
Okay, anyone else, questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, I believe, so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak? I've got one card here, which is for Mark H. Gunderson. Come on down, Mr. Gunderson, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. Mark Gunderson, on behalf of Sonoma Highlands. I'll try to be brief. The opposition that Sonoma Highlands has is a conditional or a limited opposition, and it focuses primarily on the integration of a roadway, the Lazy Five Parkway, that services not only this development, but the Sonoma Highlands development. And from our perspective, there are inadequate findings of the impact on the community, the community development, and all of the development that surrounds the Kylie Ranch development. Those are inadequate findings by planning, it's inadequate by staff. It simply says that the developers should both go work it out. That's not a sufficient or a necessary finding. I don't disagree that the details of this easement do need to be worked out, but there seems to be an agreement that an easement of some type and location should be there, needs to be there, and needs to be there for not only this development, but for the Sonoma Highlands. And lacking that, it's inadequate to simply say it goes back to the parties to work it out. So what I am asking this council to do is to send it back to staff for further findings on the community impact, including the impact on Sonoma Highlands, have specific findings, and that will also allow us a sufficient period of time, 60 or 90 days, to work out with Kylie the details of the easement, and we have been working very hard on that. I have just become involved, and as everyone probably realizes, I'm pushing it pretty hard, but without those findings, without that impact being addressed on a community-wide basis, it makes it very hard for there to be good faith negotiations to get this wrapped up. So that would be the position of the Sonoma Highlands.
Thank you, Mr. Gunderson. Anyone else in the audience want to speak to this? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll bring it back to council for questions or action. Any questions for Ms. Melby or the applicant? Anyone? Okay, looking for a motion then.
Just got a quick comment.
Go ahead, comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to hear from our attorney and his opinion. I haven't heard an opinion from the attorney on this easement at this time. Is this in our purview, is it not?
How long of an opinion do you want?
A succinct one.
The easement has nothing to do with the applicant's request. It's collateral to the applicant's request. It's north of the tentative map, this has to do with everything, all of the staff's review and analysis. Their findings were based upon the applicant's request, which was primarily in the southern part. The easement itself is not part of the applicant's request, it's not even relevant, it's collateral to this issue today.
And then the other thing, I'm just going to, and I'm going to be very frank, because that's my nature, you know, when I want to accomplish something in my neighborhood, I don't threaten to sue people, I don't call their staff inadequate or their findings inadequate, I try to find a way to work things out and try to find common ground. So when you walk in the door, first thing you do is say, "We're going to sue the city, we're going to sue you, your staff is not doing a good job." It kind of makes me upset. So I'm not going to support that part of it. I will support the applicant's request. Thank you.
Okay, looking for a motion, Ms. Bybee.
Comment.
Comment, looking for a comment, Ms. Bybee.
The dispute, this dispute is troublesome to me, because honestly, as a city that tries to be business-friendly, as a city to try to encourage businesses to come and do business here, and as a city who works together really well, I really have a problem with the issue, the dispute that's going on here, and I absolutely, as someone who's very much in favor of limited government, it's not our place, it's not the city's place to get involved. I do believe in the findings here, that this is a matter between private parties, the city should not intervene. However, on the other hand, I think I would encourage the business, both business owners in this matter, Kylie Ranch and the Sonoma Highlands, to work something out. We need to work together for the betterment of our city, for the housing that we're going to need, for access to that housing, I would encourage the developers to work together and work something out that's mutually satisfactory for both parties, and I do not believe it's my job as city council to, or our city, to step into this, it's between you, but I would ask that you please, encourage you, please sit down and work something out that will benefit everyone in the long run and both of your developments. So I would encourage that, and I do support this tentative handbook that's coming before us today.
Ms. Radie.
Thank you. Agree with pretty much what everybody has said. The one thing that did catch my attention that gave me some pause, so it's been characterized as a dispute between two developers, Sonoma Highland and Kylie Ranch, but what caught my attention in the packet was the six or seven other landowners that are affected, who are also waiting for that easement. And, you know, my impression, I don't know any of the folks personally, but my impression is, you know, those are much smaller landowners, I just don't know, you know, is that somebody's retirement, is that, how many years can go by where those folks who thought they had a plan 12 years ago don't have any resolution? So same thing, you know, it would take a pretty compelling argument for me to overturn our staff, our planning commission, and our attorney, that's not going to happen, but I would encourage both parties to figure it out, and those were the folks who I ended up feeling most sympathetic for, were those smaller landowners that are kind of caught in the middle and aren't going to be able to do anything with their property until this is resolved. So same thing, same message to both parties, let's figure this out so that we can move forward.
Okay, unfortunate situation, but the law's the law. I think small landowners, large, whatever, you know, I feel sorry for all of them, especially, like you say, the small ones, but, you know, again, it's, we can't be everything to everybody, so, looking for, again, a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the amendment to the Kylie Ranch North tentative planned development handbook associated with PCN 14038, adopting findings PDA through PDG and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Smith? Second. We have a motion by Ms. Bybee, second by Mr. Smith, to approve 11.1 PCN 14038. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 4-0 with Mr. Schmidt as an abstention. Okay, thank you, folks, thanks, Karen. Closed-door session, Steve?
Yes.
Comments from the public, anyone else's comments from the public? I don't have any cards. Comments from the city council, city manager, Mr. Adams?
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to the city council our newest attorney on staff, Allison McCormick. Allison comes to us directly from the attorney general's office. Before that, she clerked for Nevada, one of the justices in the Nevada Supreme Court, Justice Paragari.
That's correct. Good afternoon.
Very fortunate in having her, and hopefully we'll get her before you on several different occasions in the future.
Welcome.
Don't, don't, don't sit down, come on up. You're not going to get off that easy, dear. So for me and the rest of the council, welcome aboard. Anything you'd like to say, you know, we're happy to have you here, you come from a great place and can really add to our staff, we appreciate that, so.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here and happy to be in the service of the City of Sparks in northern Nevada.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison, welcome. Any other comments? Mr. Driscoll, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of announcements related to committees. The first is the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. There's one member of the construction industry for a four-year term. All subsequent appointments will be for four-year terms, and we'll be accepting applications for this committee until the close of business on August 26, 2016. Additionally, we are looking for appointments for the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission, five members for two-year terms. Memberships to the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission will be appointed in the following matter. Two members with performing arts background, two members with visual arts background, one member with a humanities background, and the Parks and Recreation Director will assign one non-voting staff member. Applications for this commission will be open until close of business on Friday, July 29th. For persons interested in serving on these committees, they should complete a community service application available from the City of Sparks' clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us, where you would click on City Services on the webpage, you would then click on Volunteer and Get Involved, and then click on Fill Out the City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. One last comment. Last week, we had a pretty good fire up in the mountains, I think, up in the mountains, up in the hills of Eastern Sparks, by the S. I want to thank everyone that was involved. Truly, this was a community effort, which was led by the Sparks Fire Department, of course, did a very, very good job. But not only them, you know, everybody came out. We had Sparks Fire, Truckee Meadows Fire, Reno Fire, Story County, Douglas County, BLM Fire, Washoe County Sheriff's Office helicopter Raven. Chief Deputy Sherman Box used to work for, Lieutenant for the Sparks Fire Department, gave direction to Raven to save the S. So we made sure we did that. You know, this was a great effort by, you know, it really amazes me how we argue back and forth about this response and who's responding there and back and forth. You know, when something happens, we're there, are we not? Everybody's there together, whether we're arguing who's going where or whatever. We got somebody in charge, thank God it was us, right, right? And everybody came together, we did a wonderful job of putting that fire out. So kudos to everyone involved, and especially, again, to our dispatchers and our community development people, you know, they never get any kudos for any, doing anything. They were out there working hard and getting things together and making sure this fire got put out. So very pleased with the effort from not only our people, all the people around the county and out of the county and whatever. So thanks to everyone, really appreciate it, thanks. Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the July 11th meeting of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency with a roll call.
Chairperson Ratty?
Here.
Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, I'll move on to item number 4.1, Approval of the Agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Agency Member Lawson, seconded by Agency Member Martini. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Item 5.1, Minutes for the June 27th meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Agency Member Lawson, seconded by Agency Member Martini. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Move to adjourn.
Passes unanimously. Item 6.1, Report of Claims and Bills Approved for Payment and Appropriations Transfers, June 9th, 2016 through June 22nd, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Agency Member Lawson, seconded by Agency Member Bybee. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Again, we'll go back to comments from the public. Seeing no comments from the public, comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer? Anybody have any comments? Well, we are adjourned.